It's almost seven twenty-five and we're gonna open up just a public, public hearing. It's Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, seven twenty-five. For the city C G program year two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine, five-year consolidating plan. And program year two thousand twenty-five, uh, would be your actual planning, uh, in budget. Uh, presenting and approving authorizing this issue of this community development library proposal. Uh, he did provide for you to draft changes since, since Pat came and talked to how close, uh, the budget. And again, the amount in the budget of two thousand twenty-five is four hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars uh, to the U S Department of Housing and Recreation. And I'm presenting also to the committee on development, uh, subcommittee. And you all have in the packet that budget again, no changes from when Pat gave us the preview. So we've had no changes, um, to it, but then the happen, death in his family. And so he's not here tonight. We will leave this public comment if there's anybody from the committee that would like to discuss the once-walls C D G program year budget. We'd love to, to hear from you. You can tell us your name and address and, um, to talk to you. If not, we'll just sit until we get to seven thirty. As any questions too, I believe. It's just the running late. He also had those in your full packet was in front of me. It was in minutes and presented to us a few weeks ago by Pat. Can I ask what that interview is? In the community development. Yes, we're good. So, um, thank you very much. We, uh, now after seven thirty and seven thirty-two, so we're not having a public comment. Um, we will close the public hearing on the C G program consolidating five-year plan. And here one's budget of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the reason that now the two thousand twenty-five budget is because of one's, I think, to, uh, August, July, or April, so next, and July next. And, um, as each year goes, um, if there's needs changing for, let's say, next year, they lower the amount of C G. Two thousand, then they have to adjust that budget back to council. We then need, um, those allocations and amend that Mexico's like the one, um, hunt access. Or as five years planer, again, uh, he just said a few minutes ago that you never know what you're gonna get. We've been pretty consistent with you. Roughly, um, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, give or take ten or fifteen thousand for the last nine years. Um, it's because we're such good, um, stewards of this money, we need to allow where it goes. They have to follow the specific guidelines. We meet those guidelines and, uh, get their approval. Year after year now quarterback. I think that Pat, in one of his presentations was, but how it said that over twenty years, it's been well over like eight million dollars. Sorry, I don't want to just cover it. Be wrong. It was extensive, um, like, um, it's countless. And, uh, so we're grateful for it. Um, thank you for that. And I believe that this budget is in our business to approve. Uh, so we'll close that public hearing and I'll open the city in Glen's Falls, downtown council meeting Tuesday, July eighth, a little after seven thirty. Uh, here at Council Changers, ready for session, we'll call it, uh, the order. And we have the pledge of allegiance that by councilwoman Goodwin, please.
The United States of America, the Republic of which stands this foundation, not in this law, but in justice.
So first off, it's always in our meetings, we have public commentary, Florida public comment. Anybody wish you to come forward, run the time, state name and address. And please remember, there's a three-minute time frame in public comment. I'll ask you to address the whole councils and group, not any single council person. And also later remind us all that this is not, this is a public comment period. Not necessarily dialogue conversation. We can certainly ask clarifying questions, but it's simply a public comment period. Uh, so if anybody would like to address the council. And everything was sorted all around twenty-first. We just got kind of like excuse supply the same middle to it. Found the, of course, also the George, so we're going to come. Down to see how this is the city shall make the work of sorting action. Bring the work of sorting action out of current. That genuinely, I've done my work so much, twenty-five, uh, and the opposite words. There already can be like a quarter, uh, quarter, we're staying on, hoping, looking for a perfect day. We're just trying to, not, it's just like, excuse that, excuse, while we're doing it. But it's a, it's a, you know, see, so.
Repeat your address.
Sure, thirty-one, two hundred and five. Go across the six, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Here you go, the timeline, attractive, one hundred and seventy thousand. So we don't, maybe twelve units issued, um, in the six years. Stand a pink with Florida. No problem, he said, he said along here, city starting. That's all, this is all water aims, yes, and then this is construction. Same for the salary sheet, so it's a very one traction, uh, two churches, that, but slowly, uh, let's say, every apartment, city line, so there's an twelve, fifteen, two, so on, but lots of such. And those are the, one, six months ago, five, just, definitely, while the planning is on, it's not that out. I'm still, by one, by, say, so long. Helped, it's okay for help, but still don't manage. We have gas, I can't run. Jack, that promise, there is no ghost, I'm a little bit, yes. Uh, I want to commission, actually directions to the council, so I can say. See, we could, whatever, I can't, I can test the comments, show them, any ones, whatever, stay by, uh, permanent. So I need a philosophy station, so I can put that second step next time. So what if you, can you tell me again, if you told what I like, what are sorts only that fail? Is it, oh, this person, the technology. Said, it was a big, let's say, they have the boat, or so on, based. Did I delete the boat, so like, but they're all sitting like, all things. He's, uh, his mother is a solid. Just to fill out some dreams. So he's presented to the water sewer lower and they told him that they don't do this work. They don't do the work because of liability. We do understand it's expensive enough. They have tried this many, many years, um, and the panel will tell you what, so I can be glad to ask. Water sewer should definitely board folks in to, to be glad to give you a response to this. Cause I don't want to try to give an answer that's incorrect. Um, so if you have a thought at the next meeting, if you wish to come. You know, getting to, it's definitely a water and sewer issues, the water and sewer wars, um, decision. And the superintendents, certainly the council can, can speak to them in part. Certainly, but if they probably have some of the problems. We know you're having a big budget. It's a, it's an expensive, big expense. It's something one of which has all, all the colors. Do, for many years, right, I can't remember the number of years again. I guess that's the nice thing now is stop, um, talking and try to get information, give the council information. Thank you, our souls, and they have, and there is a pause in there that, you know, we should do, but, 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 but. But, so, so the city, I think, that's wrong. So, be grateful, at least have a, sure, give that information. So, um, here, and a video copy of it as well. And we'll get a legal ticket by water sewer attorney as well. Okay, I'll get it, share them. First of all, yes. Then she, always they split us as long as they fall up, so it's.
Natural way of her, it's been helped due to the water sewer. So, that's, sorry. I'm a seeker, so. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. If you want to give me your thoughts, Maran, you're welcome.
Anybody have mind reading of the company? Well, that concludes public comment. Next, uh, agenda is, um, that's the, uh, the assessment office in K L W uh, to talk to you, present the council, uh, questions and answers regarding the upcoming citywide property assessment.
So, you know, we're doing the citywide review this year. So, for the seventh, we said, my goal of twenty twenty-five, which just finished, July first. The New York State Office of Real Property Detect Services Equalization Board has determined that the equalization rate for City of Glen's Falls to be one percent, so we follow percent. This did decrease the equalization rate with primarily the residential property in the city. July first, twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty-four. Which is evaluation period of two thousand twenty-five, as we call it, for New York State. The median, median sale price for single-family residence in Glen's Falls for two thousand twenty-four says, really, is two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Fifteen?
Two hundred and fifty. For the two thousand twenty-five roll year, there was over eighty-four on-site sales of single-family residences. So roughly between ten and fifteen percent higher than the median trend assessments that we did in twenty-four. Over twenty to twenty-five percent higher than original assessed, assessed values from two thousand twenty-two. The median sale price for single-family residences in Glen's Falls for the twenty-five says, we roll is two hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Two hundred and fifty, two, 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 like twenty percent. Already equalization. But remember that we were safely, safe, six, four, five, eight, two, two, three. We put the tone in, I always start. So, fair, so far, when he says twenty-one, he submitted our plan to the New York State Office of Real Property. They will have to do this, they're speaking for, bringing the box A to the set. These assessments on the site of all, several basis. For all assessments, point this before your plan, which is at work. In the city, we received two thousand fifteen, five dollars per person, pursuing to the point. Received brother months, eighteen thousand dollars, in the first day of the twenty-two assessment. In twenty twenty-two, the county, they, 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 the city, one thousand, the theory, the earth, there was the city, like, the assessment. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty, this year, twenty-five. That was the first, seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy-six, city, 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 seven, four, twenty-six, and seven, four, six, seven, eight. That was first, seventy five, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven, seventy eight. Therefore, it's worth the second year, the city has been seven years, the city runs both through the city. Back to one hundred percent. Cheerled daily, that'd be certain, probably here for six weeks, personally, to the public, publicly, to the staff. The sale information.
Right. So as part of the recent project. The planning system will cover the up for some coming tax year, not knowing how that is. Um, assume it's playing. Who would have gotten adjusted? Try to make two years ago, um, the issue very much well. Um, but due to that trending, it still shows that properties selling above or something. Um, chances again, change the market. Um, so we've taken first now doing a project. Started this. Two groups, try to help the city review. Sitting here, um, continue it, it's probably through the end box. Um, also not just starting with several. So we have done a little get sounds of the turn up until July first, twenty twenty five, four, twenty six, seven. So as that data comes in soon, um, shall enter into the database once that's all completed, certainly analyzed. To look at what's happening within all the areas in city to determine how. Response of, um, that select the top sales. Uh, you do that. That which you follow through. Then a bunch of things did, um, twenty twenty two assessment. Or assessment project. Um, for me, it's in March of twenty twenty six. Just prior to this, we're only assessing, uh, assessing change of seven hours. Will we be able to talk around the city? So I've worked on the fact of what the assessment may be changed to include that in the cover of some absolute information. What questions, how to get the answers from us, schedule meeting, stuff, myself, we remember this. So we can answer the questions. If we have to do that prior, right, to the technical, which is technical, the first of twenty twenty six. So, um, we have a bit more to do with that.
What's on going down, staying alive?
That is usually a typical assessment to be statistically different. However, tell you will have joined the property plus the. Something, um. Fewer of properties that go up a lot.
We were at seventy five equalization rate, we hadn't done it in fifteen years. So would it not be, I appreciate the question, thinking, would we, we're hoping. If we do this every four years, even if the sales are as strong as they are, we know people want. And this region is never before for wide range. So questions, would you think it's gonna be back to one third, one third, one third, being high to solid twenty five percent utilization? I, I kind of.
It's, okay. When it doesn't. But we're down to the thing that color this. If. If the entire city has the same amount of market. Then. They could be, they could be, you know, plus, oh, conspiracy, of they have, they have something. Some global bodies. Because if this city is all at the same market, try. Then, 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 then it's, but if that's really hard to tell. Sales. July, they're just getting sales, they're not supporting that in June, so, you know, we have the incentive to see that. And you gotta bring it down, be like, city, but also by property type. And by property type, it could be a single family house, two family house, three family house. While we're talking with commercial apartments, commercial nice use, um, or a single family. Trains based on building style, people have gotten to do any suspicious.
So I have a fault that I think is great. Your praise takes and goes in other sales. So if this, you know, I agree how to give it. I don't see an end to this because it's just constantly real estate market. It's just exploding in that, you know, people are already, wow, we can ask all this amount of money. Because everyone's paying over asking. So. Your setting is, is if that doesn't stop, this.
If, if. The, if the market conditions. You're constantly chasing, you're the greatest possible. These products are just. Um, I put out. Trying to use my magic ball. Um, thinking that markets would hit a plateau. So that appreciation. Especially with the long story. They're saying they prefer to know what they, they just have. So all the way. Like touching water.
Right.
So we just can't really think like. Which is probably. Having experience. About seeing things that, and which is. We don't see, we're not seeing. But there's just that. Change in set values, it's not so changing, chasing that. Us things. There's the body really positive, why don't we want to have? Think of the, just to the, the property. So things to fund.
This doesn't mean, so just a part of two. So right now, total property tax, the tax levy, total anomaly collected. It's about eleven million dollars. Last year, the total value of the property, we haven't done an assessment in fifteen years. Total value fifteen or twelve, being out of eighteen years ago, but eighteen and nineteen years ago. The total value of all the properties is about eight hundred eighty dollars. And then after we did the street assessment, the total property value in the city was all one point six million. And we didn't collect any more money than eleven million total collected, same, same. And so what happened is although some people paid more, some people paid less, a lot of people paid the same, the same. The total amount collected by the city did not change, tax revenue changed. So our, we went from thirteen thousand fifty cents tax per thousand dollar investment. Was done is now eight dollars and forty nine cents per thousand. So, um, people misunderstood, it still could be capable for some people. But we didn't collect, say, that many more billion in property tax, we didn't collect any tax. So the rate went all that down and, and although nobody wants to see this happen. It is a sign of the people want to live in more. Let's fall, moving up, so for a whole bunch of different reasons. So that's still the same, right, being. Tax levy is not gonna go up, it's nothing new.
They're, they're completely. That is one of the largest. With, obviously, this is something, obviously, something. Probably within this, this question we have, every project. We always have people say, sitting here in the municipality, town, whatever, it's doing always in a living model. And it's totally not the case, because the budget, the budget, the quality. Assessments, we have jobs, we set up our property, this distribution of that one week too. Then it's not. The time together, obviously, it's a task. You know. Break aside. Fire assessments are going, fire to, but. So it's. It's on property. You got. Not necessarily. Assessments, it's a sensor. Is, you're able to determine is what, what share that. How many assess that.
So, so, so. My house was assessed in nine thousand dollars. You're saying that assessment is that. President's every person says a lot of forty thousand. So if the guy down the street from me got a house just like mine, he's now single for a hundred forty thousand dollars. Does that put that hundred forty thousand dollars tag? Cause I have a similar house, similar name, or the debt, would it be signed like that? There could be way over another size.
No, I'm trying to. This is. This is important.
So look, I'm afraid.
Exactly, so there's different slight differences. The essential process that's. What is the difference is that. We don't go inside. Everybody's house, we don't examine everybody's house. For your property. House will take vision. Get into the basement, I'm talking about updates versus. The Canada systems. Um, really. Into it for assessment, what is the amount? For the time scale and for financial standpoint. It's not reasonable to think. To do that type of inspection process. We're crazy, we pay five hundred dollars to increase two, two dead ones for four. Five hundred dollars times fifty four hundred, fifty four hundred parcels, then doesn't make a lot. So it's definitely. And that, humans property is the same. So we kind of don't know. So what are we going to sell them on a personal basis? Cost about that topic. When we discuss the differences, difference in physical characteristics. Like, like. Down the street, I had three times. So now, part of the market. Reacts that they pay more money for the three.
So. So. We had this. So a lot of people said, my, when you said, okay. Uh, has had a lot of. Where have we had? So now. I can show you. How does that play out? Because now we have these holes that have been hit by the storm. And they have. So call policy, I'll say, so that's still go on. What that holds are still looking like. That could compare right to the person to the other homes, just even with the big forces and. Would you, well, wow, wow. Because I think it's kind of unfortunate, too, that you actually have a cost of that.
I mean, we'll have to look at. To tell what typically. Slowly damage. Right, um, if your problems are a lot, it's hard to score, we had. Have officially prepared to give a back to owners. Right, so it's like, and that's a lot of things we would have. That doesn't mean it's any overall condition. Because. Sales. At some point. So maybe with signings, we don't play. So like overall, the. Overall, the. Probably. There's two that doesn't change, your property condition. If you're probably. Same, uh, who's there, requesting fair condition prior to the store. I heard the product. Were previous. Last assessment, fair condition. Then that's amateur, so that's damage. Your property is having change prior to the damage, most likely.
If you ask what. Somebody wants to play.
Absolutely. People, people are in property. Well, it's like. In property. Should start with. Get it. Sounds, we're getting up to. There's. The interior, so. Situation. That. I think that's. Form. Provide additional. Time, we had more information from.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, community reports, council party.
Yes, seeing July first, that fourteen fifteen, uh, we had noted that. Uh, we went over. Near. Patients, granted wars, um, from. Sparkle Reserve, let's see, they grant. Three hundred thousand dollars, uh, safe streets, we're all bringing. For six hundred thousand dollars. Both. We also talked about the recent grant awards, the DA Brown Field, Story York, housing, basic rental property. Rates, uh, so. We're getting a lot of grants from the plans, we're getting grants and. Continue to do so to help. July fifteenth, we have the annual training, we will be meeting, your conference. That is it.
Creator of council committee. On the. A bonus task for the day, that was made this Thursday, at two thirty, the conference here. Councilman.
Okay, folks, we have a back to the third year. We've got some updates for both of the. Plan components, the fire. Maybe folks can take a dust. Software. Software, it's. Public straight line communications between the departments and. So that's good. We also recommend to you about. Our still. Or this, we have supplies here, so. We get a big house that we select, somebody. Be that the next season, so if there is. Somebody who. It's been left to use notable, gets by issues, doesn't fly. Either number of weeks. Go a couple, we need more than that, and they will be built. Again, this is not for someone who won't play, this is for somebody who really wants to try. And if there's doesn't recourse. Oh, the residents, so they don't have to deal with that. In our school districts. And then the fire inspector updated us on his process with extensions. He's been. It's almost done, suddenly spacing, working on ultimately getting these versions. We will next be on the twenty sixth of August. And we're planning that phase for you or. So our intention was to do that on a regular basis. And so they had a place for a couple of years, we want to repeat that, see if there's any changes, any demand, there's.
Uh, council. Uh, the technology that yesterday. Other train, it's about getting for seats like this, and there's still some. Question. Gallery, um, to make sure we have all these. The market set camera is in the process of being installed right now, so. No, because. Spray, storm, um, the police. Uh, but got the ability, it's laying, that is our vendor for. Posting website, we can have, uh, our vendor for creating content for the website. Exactly now. That, that. Giving that together. Mostly it's now. Spiriting for. That. So, uh, that's something just. It goes all over. City, uh, being have a heart, it's ever dead long. Here in state. Requirements. And that they need to. What do you think? One of that, it's definitely. Price, also. Curious, have a different option. Spirit as. Sort of like that. We also represented one of the contract extension for short term, uh, annual. I'll still have to open kind of question. So, following those things, uh. Fire, fire for security. We're going forward in the, the existence assessment and. Figure it is. You had those. That's chipless. Need to. Or maybe it's. It's about next four weeks. You are. To call. Fire. At that, it's required to save. Full business on cameras. Uh, said, said, no, we just, we're. Or he about silver sheet. A lot of. Uh, city proceeds, a lovely. That also. Where we are, uh, the next meeting Monday, August fourth.
Thank you, councilwoman. Um, your consent, Julie, with consent agenda, we have a date items. Questions. Concerned by.
This is about related. Going forward. Many clients that. Aggression determines. Agenda. So this one is. One question, the patent property, why? Spilled out, time, prior. Prior. Before. Set, create. Application. And. Work has been done. The ingredients were passed. So that's one question. Um, then. For the. Axios, well. From reading this, says that we need to. Time for me, that I said, I'll get there first. Which I think is.
So you have the number two question. That you have a question, one is, so. Forty four, forty five, so are those just the both of those? You want to, um, so I can have the answer for you, why they didn't get on to last one, is we have a sense of charge happening. If you want, I can pull it and give you the answer. Prove that, so we're. Cool. And then the other one is the Venatio program. The, so Jeff, would you like to come up and talk about the Venatio? I know Jeremy Clinton today. Do you like to come up and talk about the Venatio request for the twenty, phase two twenties and twenty four million dollars? Right, so I'll give you my understanding of it, since I put it on the agenda, so you can let me know where. Venatio is now, set the clothes, do the closing on phase two around July twenty seventh. Sixteenth and the code, we're looking to start construction around twenty first, twenty second. And um of this, it includes the uh phase two, to remind everybody, is a new building that was run from the. Say that he's building to the hot dog shop. And it's uh so that a new commercial along that corridor and apartments above it, which are power workforce housing. Apartments uh in my term uh to ACR tax credits. About three stories above that new commercial, it's on solid. And then a seventy-seven apartment building that would be right out on the back door of West City. Um and and so that's those are the projects, it's about, is it twenty-two, twenty-four?
About twenty-six million.
Twenty-six million dollars worth of investment um from Venatio now with the tax credits and that approved by ACR. Um that is uh where it's ready to break ground. And the encroachment of this that's being requested by Venatio is uh the four parking spaces that are in front of. Start beginning, say where Sandy's is today and run down to um the four spots, most of the way towards the. Apple. Shack. Uh Venatio has also agreed to try to um uh to maybe reduce those so that those apartment spaces may develop on Saturdays. After the first two months of construction, as he is going.
Yeah, just the the fundamental change out of here is essentially the parking spot. Beginning construction on new building. Which is five stories high. They're gonna be in the side watching front wide some of the facility. So what the rest is to do is to push out the the real. Uh Sandy's, Hillary's, and that's the access there. Is because of this parking spot being there. So the need. They're moving from parking spots, they want to push out essentially the front or the face of the hell of a company. Which runs essentially by the curb that is. Along the same.
So this. This doesn't match what obviously. Their. Streets closed for thirteen and five. So. Yeah, it's. Look at this, and this is kind of the life. Biggest. So I had a top time.
Okay, this is probably the simplest thing like that. Yes. Yeah, yeah. So you can see if you look at that and you see the red line that's there. And essentially, most of that is already kind of soft, right? Different pockets are just soft. Essentially, they're pushing out. You look at all the sand, it's part of my habit.
Go back. Very. But it's not, they're not maybe where the design is supposed to go.
The.
After the second markets and science.
Okay.
So same, but that I can say that I could probably.
The the blue line here, without respect to marketing.
This is why I. Very, very. To say. Of this, if you approach. For the entire way, for the entire.
The line of path is the blue one. And that's the same line of span, there's no change. But that's gonna be.
Or the largest. There is no. There is no accessibility. Guides about. But there must be play. Turn around.
Right.
If you're coming up Don Street, which is shut down.
Correct.
Guides for what to do for destiny. Which is what. On great way, accessibility. Orders.
If there's science called for, I would suggest. Science can be put up. It's without respect. Here.
That encroachment from those times to here. Except they have not been doing anything. Billy James giving. Even the, I don't think we have someone in the city to go around and just point out where is lacking. What bits request. I I I've been looking through this. I feel like this is very useful for somebody that has. Pushing. That last so. So many. Like it's like a sandwich sign. In. For building saying, this is where.
What they're asking for is to construct, send me two new buildings. So I mean, they're. The idea would be to the very least until the buildings are instructed. Until until they're sent to do an interior work, and I don't think it's reasonable to ask them to sort of anticipate. And they're. The. For this. Anything additional, the only thing they're looking to do is push the fence out. To encompass four spaces along the side. The sun, which is not designed to be used now anyway, but the existence of those apartments.
So here um here it is, concerns about this encroachment, which is is forty-four, forty-five, considering. It's forty-four, forty-five. Forty-five. So we're pulling forty-four to um. And so we're not going to ask forty-four. I try to understand why that is requested. Then seems to think that it was um. Given to us before the council meeting, but didn't think that. It's a tiny thing, but I'll find out. So. Yeah.
So I. I think that the parts. Last.
Which was. Generally. To do not. Right.
He was the. It was received. After that onto the agenda, the other issue was your request was for, I'd like to start in one day, five hundred to five minutes. So that was why I. Box, that's why I signed up. Plus was. Or start up between their June.
I. Okay. Before then. And if you love that. They started being.
They'll see. They'll see the June of October speed, it didn't have any final. Department.
There's one. So two. Myself.
And it does. For all of those.
This is.
Those things include.
June eighteen. EPW was June eighteen.
And June eighteen is a timeframe that was. Well, that's it. Wednesday.
Yes.
And we definitely.
That morning is new. Wednesday.
So that is from the city. City employees that are getting laid for that. And that means that. I know. This. It's absolutely impacted. Communities aren't necessarily looking down. Whether to the people that are. Red. That.
So what we do is, Councilman, our Councilman Palmer. Councilman Lattan's concerns about an approach with permit six point five. Permit number forty-four, two thousand twenty-five, and forty-five, two thousand twenty-five. Let us pull both of those and put them on. Add them as regular agenda, which we can make them the first ones. And I don't know what if it would be under community development, but it doesn't matter, let's let's at least do that so we can have a roll call. Regarding those. Because apparently this one council member is uncomfortable with those. Those proposals, so um.
It's also like. Forward that. Time now. Dealing with. Permits. Or like that. Often consent. Agenda.
Oh, okay, so you have that. Thank you. That's fine. Um, okay, so consent agenda items. And Jeff, I'll just have you stand there if you would for a second, so we can get through this and then we'll get right to we'll do those two items, which were consent agenda items, so we'll put them on the regular agenda. Um if I have any questions. So um consent agenda, uh is there any other concerns about any other consent agenda items? Number six point one, six two, six three, six four, six six, six seven, or six eight?
Oh, she did.
All family. Any opposed? Motion pairs, thank you very much. On the regular gen- uh the regular agenda, uh we have uh at this point, we have two uh approach permits. Call them uh. Let's see, I'll call them six point uh five number uh an approach permit number forty-four dash point twenty-five. That is for a permanent. Patent development project. Um and uh we have concerns from Councilman Lattan that they um felt that although they were approved that Wednesday. Um and that was, it didn't make the cutoff that should have been on the thing, is there any other concerns, Councilman? Uh that you'd like to discuss before we go.
No, I I would share some of what Councilman Lattan was saying, just in the sense that I think the best practice would be for us to vote with. It's not much to talk. Obviously, there's numbers. People, there's. But. He gets. Uh but for that one in particular, I. I'm trying to sign through the public press release and then what the business has asked me wanted to this. I didn't have the answers, so I had to. Persuading here, it was very good. Eight answers would might get that shared, but. Ideally, you won't be in a position like that. To go into the process. It's not too possible, right? I shared.
Sure. I would say a number of different times that on Thursday, uh Thursday, maybe I think about this. Uh add on to. Get it. Thursday. I've got updates here. And either on Wednesday. It could have been, we were trying.
Correct. I just want to clarify. Um, I know South Street being. Very much so right now, of all construction with the businesses. Um, the businesses were carefully considered, and the reason why, again, eighteen later, was because the idea was to have a private start. At a very early time, that Monday morning, which had been fired council. To avoid any startings with those businesses because they would follow water issues. Um and because most of those businesses hit all of them closed those days. Um, so it was very considered, it was. It was considered to me the enemy in the product, it wasn't working to afford the startings of those businesses. So that's why it wasn't. You know, if it wasn't a council, it would have been time because they were going to start a topic.
It would have been. Listen um that. Seeing something on the uh. West. Right. Having a chance to know what's happening, especially with something like this approach. So. What the.
And so we could also, too, I agree with the uh requests. Uh we need to get everything we can, we are struggling to make sure every part had, especially since we redid this. We're asking for everybody to have everything to expect being on Wednesday, this was not, we're not signing in time for that, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't have. Let you know, especially if an approach works actually being done on Monday, regardless of whether or not this, we could have shared that information with you. So that we could have had. E- even if it was too late, and we do think uh there are people that will um say on Thursday, oh my God, we have this. And and sometimes we we do it, we try not to, we're trying our best to get these all done uh well in advance so that there's uh notice that it gets to the council in time. So um those concerns are welcome, and we need to make sure that um people, people know, so in both ways, we need to get them on the agenda when we can. Also need to let other uh the council members know, especially about something that's happening on Monday. Uh so that they can share the information, they're not usually exclusive, but both we. All of ours. Make sure I follow.
So at least you're trying. The. Everyone else was just on their. There was a lot. Because it didn't explain all of this. Said right then. Now, to me, he wrote me and told me, you know, I was able to pass it up. So that's. See, I. So what. They decided. If we could try to get a little bit. But. The mechanic. Be with this, just to throw. With the six six. And we receive the option, we receive them at the office, the only time the board resigns from receiving applications or receiving the application itself and receiving um. The fee, however, that doesn't mean necessarily anything back up, that is asked additional from janitor. That's kind of sometimes why it does drag out a little bit as far as the janitor is asking for additional regionally acting. So sometimes if you see that you've all got this time, why isn't it, we need to have enough information, you know, as far as.
It's again, it's. Going to the point of. We have this information. It's not shared in council. Well, it's not shared in this. Way when we were understanding what the necessity was and what the uh. Medications were. So. Me. But it's. It's that. They were actually at least. That is a fact. And. See that. Sounds valid.
With that, we have a motion to uh, we have a motion to approve approach permit number four four dash two zero two five. The second. Rule call. Give it a rule call, please.
Councilman. Yes. What's the damage?
Yes.
It's a weird.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Any.
Yes. If you under um. Regular agenda. Call it. On the four five, it's two thousand twenty-five, is the approval of approach. For Venatio instruction of things through D R. You have the tax information with the enclosed, um you have insurance by a council member that um he's not comfortable with a. Encroachment from that length of time, worrying for that regulation. Do we have a motion to approve?
I would like to. Surely table this, so you have time. Yes, because I think I'm. I did not think that fails. Support. It's a.
So Councilman Lattan has made a motion to table it. Is there a second?
I have a question about. People missing the way.
Absolutely.
Mark.
After the.
The closing is sixteen, sixteen. I'm looking at starting the construction.
Is there a second? Not here in a second, we have a motion to approve some of it. We have a second, sad. Uh couple.
It's not much.
Yes. Because.
You.
Yes.
Oh. One. Councilman.
No.
You have to make those.
Yes. And you. Think. Under regular uh agenda items. Um regular agenda. Four dozen, three city apartments to address. The last one is uh the last one to our. Choice of engineer, so we won't talk about that, but there's seven in community, uh there's one. Uh discussion, or concerns about the um the seven point one. If not, we uh authorize seven point one to authorize an agreement about association plans for all of New York to develop property opportunity plan for Orange Street quarter. As part of the state department of states, Boa program, to create a project account in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, which two hundred and twenty-five thousand is reimbursed by New York State, and twenty-five thousand is from the city's general fund.
This has been really just about describing. Ladies, other than. I would be interested.
Um. Then I believe in the details, do you have to want to come back up since you're you're here? Um. From. Orange Street quarter, I believe that was pretty clear as well, looking at.
Sure, um so the premise of this, we. Why for this. This program, I guess, second.
Sure. So the premise of this, we buy for this, this program, this second apartment. Sprinting station operation.
I feel like we have a O A agreement for it.
It's the same. Well, again, there's two different O As in the city. There's one going down Broad Street. We just improved it, each by the O A. For, essentially, assessing the infrastructure, running essentially from essentially all the way to the end of the city. This one is the second O A that we have, and it's in the nomination phase. So essentially, we had to go identify, assess, the various, over, essentially, the entire frozen door from one street down to the, how high. And so when we do an assessment of that, we are also using a Vella, hoping to use a Vella. One reason is because the temporary is also really phase two of their qualification at the same time. So that's not the reason, so that we put it through.
That's what needs, if I get.
This will need to identify, to identify specific properties they have, really, that are possible. And essentially, they're in inventory with the area. Next, we're seeing, given the two hundred point five approved. Just we have our. And the rest of the papers. And, and this, at least then, the options are beginning to evolve, but the pre-nomination that was done in twenty eighteen. So we can, that's, so that's, we were, before the reason we had five, and something did is. Losing the span, period, which expires, we have to start a little. With, with that, is there a motion, seven point one? Do you have a second? All favor. All in favor? Any votes? Regular. And any votes? No, it's regular, if anybody's got any concern, we're going to think that somebody might want to, to help, we started, okay. For all I appreciate, it's a new, it's a new agenda. So, with, with motion, no, no pose, motion, approve, thank you, I have. I know that's, I'm, eight point, eight point one is what I assume, any questions or comments about eight point one? The approval of the sale, excuse me, approval of transfer funds to reconstruction fund account, number one zero nine one seven zero, with the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand to the solid disposal fund account, G seven eight, excuse me, seventy-one three zero nine four four seven nine, for the reimbursement of funds to be used for election with switch here project. Do we have a motion?
So.
Do we have a second? Any votes, all in favor? Any votes? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Engineer. So engineer is, it's nine point one and nine point two. The, to remind everybody what this is all about, I know this is included in the packet, the common council. So, back in twenty twenty-four, and we were fixing Webster Avenue, and working on Webster Avenue. There were concerns raised by residents on North Road, the road was in need of repair. We asked our engineer if that could be added to the Webster Avenue project. Indeed, it could not be because it was established program that had been approved by, through our bidding process and through the A G R T C's funding source. What we did is, we did recognize that North Road needed repairs and make sure that we put it on the agenda. When we, when we started this process a few months ago, North Road appears on the, so on our assessment. I think it's a number two rating out of five, so it certainly needed repair. The council, the engineer brought us the streets that he was planning on fixing, what we thought we could afford in this calendar year. And the council saw that and made any suggested changes they wanted. That, that problem then went out to bid, and North Road, as well as several other roads, are, are included in that. When engineers were visiting, the, the engineers and contractors, the people that were bidding on this contract were in the neighborhoods looking at what they were about to bid on. Some neighbors saw them out there, started asking questions, hey, what's going on in fixing the road? Issues, yes. The question, the replacement of the cement, the answer is that it's, it's the city repairs its roads. Cement roads haven't been implemented in the city probably for twenty years, twenty-five years. So as we did streets, as we do streets over, like Spotty Street, I believe, specifically, we merged Street Hill. Where Street Hill was cemented back in the day, when it came time to re-merge Street Hill, we dig up the cement and we put down the base, and then we pave it. That's a project, that's the practice. Things we don't, we haven't used cement. It's not a common use today in street repair. I couldn't be honest and tell you exactly why, I believe that's because of the longevity of the, of the academy. So, let's see, a couple of neighbors on North Road reached out to the engineer in the council meeting conference and heard more, and said they did not want to replace the cement in their sidewalk in an alternative.
Yes, the request came, it came to Jerry and Tom, I remember, last year. But the request was, and they were asking if we could do some of that repairs at the same time. Jerry explained that it's not the same, you know, probably didn't save a lot of money, but they're being a little bit, like, moving the repairs this year. So he went up to, as the man said, to look to see about replacing the whole road. A couple of neighbors approached him, so he put it out to me and to Tom, and they were the same, you know, a couple of people seemed to not want this. So I think you're out there, and you have like almost every neighbor on that street. And they told the whole company, that they do not feel it's necessary, it's necessary expense to remake their road. There are, there are some cracks that we feel, like just some pop though. And there is some additional work that needs to be done around the manifold, that's an intersection of the board, you know, next to the board. And Tom, you know, he felt that it was within the realm of the W, and the field, this, this, they should there. Put, or cement, just a small, that's a rock handful, and then you just pop it all across the street. That means additional money left that will go over the next year to be used for additional. Since none of the neighbors are in favor of it, and it's a big expenses. If I'm Jerry and I have it, and Tom against me, you don't feel like it's absolutely necessary we do it. I would say, let's not, a big expense, and it's just the other option.
Sure, Diane, that's good. If I'm receiving, so they're saying, just fill the cracks, and there's, right? What if, I don't know, you know, this, this thing up. We did hear her say that, you know, things about, two things about this, the concern. One is, maybe I just. And so something went wrong, and now it's not an easy thing to get.
We, we did a study, there were cameras down, and I did all of this, we need to report, and I have to share the amount today. See anything so concerning, but, you know, so they have to address it. Put it down this way, so, so, I could, I could ask about that. There, there's work that could be done there, just in terms of urgency. I think the biggest concern, Jerry, what you're worried about is just like, someone's pop though, or something. But if you know, if you just pop it, that we, we can navigate that concern. So, anything that actually needs to be done, I think, since urgency is there this year, and.
We're sharing, you know, all the lists.
There's two options. Well, seven, I think it's nine point two, doesn't include, is the optional number three, that's the first one, and the second one. So because it's expensive, and New York's not on that street once, and because it's a city in there, and it's a, we're saying it's not urgent. I could just say, let's save that money for something that may be more aggressive. You know, go with your option.
And another reason I said, that is the concern, our expense to get to up around here.
Yeah.
If the structure is, right, as you're saying, they look at this, they look at the bar, like, I think they're, you can't tell.
They, they put some of it, which, what they, the main source of the work that is, is by the, and that's already all. So if we do that, then just replace that little piece there. If we were to, I guess, if it doesn't want to, they do need to pay repairs down, we're not paid.
We won't be using money around that, so we, we don't know if E D W will get to that this year. They'll try, and why, and so will, will, they'll work together. Patching it is not looking for the thing to do here, for things, for opening, for cement, you'll cement and, and do it. Certainly, they, you know, we, we're trying, we never get there, so there's no guarantee. We're trying to fix that one small section, and then the rest of it will try to hot patch and go through it. And that wasn't, again, the whole way was made to certainly, is, and to look at that section that Councilman Commerce is discussing, is much worth shaving than the other section. And, and they, they can do their best, they want it to be our decision. We're saying that's, that's what the school is.
So are P U B nine point two?
So if, if somebody would like to, made a motion to approve nine point two, which is the common council board's bid number, C G F two, two twenty-five dash zero four, twenty twenty-five, street resurfacing to pack the road corporation in the amount of seven hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Contract, or any base, bid plus bid alternates, number two, four, five, six, can operate the mayor into like, bring that track group like the city attorney. Do we have a motion? So we have a motion, do we have a second? In favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Thank you very much. All this was councilly party.
All this.
All this is councilly dinner.
All of this.
Councilman lady.
You just got a good question. Are researchers going to take all the relations and votes? I get it, just follow up. It's in, obviously, it's in it, so it is.
This, I do.
I just wanted to thank everybody who worked on it for July, as always, and then, as I was walking in. We got to work on it, and it was, like, flooded. I only saw, you know, part of the land, or E D W, because it seems working. When I walked in, I showed him pictures, and he, called, healed the verse, and I was coming up with completely. Through the next drain, and I actually made the fire repairs, and the pepper house, where it's not ready to pull down. It's not the first time I had to cough it up, that was a very, that I appreciate the responsibility for that.
Well, this is. You should last. Since we last met, twenty-six, when it was in court, back in, that, maybe have, so, saying you would have been updated regarding that in particular. And I did speak to, I forgot the gentleman's name, Chuck, and invited him, but he hasn't. So he definitely took him to court, in that topic, from, I'm assuming, this, to your people.
That really care about, slightly, both, actually, this. Shoveling through different people, so, through what we do. But you have somebody who's basically operating the firehouse, how to be in, a trust, so that we can, people that are continuing to have it.
So, we.
There is, I guess, our issue, I think, six people, three personally served, which are operating for. They asked for an attorney to get an actual, like, schedule for a trial, relatively difficult, it's in jail. All the officers, and, which, 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 they were also.
So we continue to clean up, so we can, the owners, the current owners are in jail as well. So we continue to address everybody that's on their issue, and try to follow.
Pursuit law, hopefully, will make it close to six points. Do not.
Well, we should be able to do something in our, in our, this. You know, also, they, so, very. You'll have to defer, you'll have to talk to the chief, I think, in that time, if that, if that's the case, then I will. I see the ditch, chief, to council, so that I can ask questions. That is, that will be canceled, basically, sure.
This is very, very, what is it?
Let's, I can, I can, there were, there were, number one, all, there's, and the whole, it's been followed. There is a non-go, that's Asian wine, is, that people publish and be honored. I have no sense of, I was here, about fifty people protesting because of lack of communication from the city and from the police about why this person passed away. So there's, there's something that has not been pulled to the panel, or to.
They've told us a non-open investigation.
Yeah, a non-open investigation for an op.
I don't know.
And that's why I would like to, which, you know, I think, I believe that the people of the city have the right to.
I don't know, I don't think, but the reason I said is, we're going to see a lot of these case dogs that may revolve here or so down the road because they seem to hold all the courage, most in their chest, that they don't, there's a passive mode, suspect, let's say.
There's a lot, cheese is a situation, that they put down. Whatever it said, whatever it said, that, that, she told us, why it said that. I can say, there are people, state, from, they're sort of waddling, and making speculation about what she's, that is. I think the city, you know, gives, a bad circle, and what happened, I mean, especially.
So if you're old, this is, I don't think it's possible to write a motion, this is, is I, the mayor's. should have motion, tell them. But I have spoken to the chief about this, this is not an ongoing investigation, it's actually not a lawsuit, and we will not and the chief has communicated at least one time, that I saw an email to council in Blackcomb City, that he'd be glad to talk about it, if he wanted to reach out to him, and I talked to the chief, but not
Oh, I didn't mean it, said, well, I'll have to reach out.
I did not ask him, I asked him to reach out, he hasn't, that's his prerogative. And I am not telling any further about this ongoing investigation or lawsuit. And if you wish to go and speak to the chief or contact him again, above to, I will again ask the chief to reach out to you. But that is, that is, he has said that he will tell you what he's, are, to the public, and that one thing more, because he will not just jeopardize ongoing investigation and now lawsuit. So I appreciate that, you have any other old business? Thank you, councilwoman, old business? Counsel, thank you, councilwoman. New business, councilman Clark? Councilman, not, councilman
Two things, I agree with councilman, they did wonderful, wonderful, they're great department. I went there for the first time, and you slapped the fireworks from a distance, I saw that ring, I said, there's our opportunity to be there. So apparently, everybody did that, and also wanted some recognition for our fire department, and an actual job to provide the orange, and save lives, and property, stealing streams.
New business, councilman.
They actually ran my back, they were asking if we need the crosswalks, I scheduled, they were saying we were some of the problem. Which I, I don't know, it's a week that the chief may not go to give it a try, I would possibly get in there, so I if that's anything like a, or say, me, or say, yes.
Personally, we have, that's the schedule, it's our engineer, so for repair and also, that's the engineer to share the schedule once upon the agenda, the we, we share any requests to Jeremy and Tom, and Tom, to be sure that he, we look at his budget, how much he can afford, you know, prioritize those, I know, for instance, I know that the parking lot behind, what we call the industry block, is to finding all that work is done, that construction and the bait and everything, so that needs to be done, I also believe that itself where itself needs to broaden, and that little extension abroad in the corner, that's going to be done, so that we can clarify and make sure that it's part of the parking there, it was making too long.
He did not schedule the saves, like, they didn't speak on the rest of the site.
No, I mean, we almost always do it this time of year, we do some, but I don't know that it's a formal schedule where we can say, these are
Obviously, we have to hear during the struggle, you know, I like the role we for, this, for, this time, you know, it's just like, you see that.
That's true.
Thank you. So I'll get, I'll get a list of what is personal concern, and I'll just send it to Tom and Jerry.
Thank you, thanks, very, thank you. If you copy me too, I can follow up and get it scheduled for the entire season, share with the council, basically. You know, you were, councilman, back, new business. New business, councilwoman. Let's see, you guys beat me to the punch about July, the fourth, and certainly, moss, and especially with the rain coming, and watching you guys, as I was arriving, and watching everybody, and then the cloud was sitting, and everybody go back, it was pretty cool, to see the baseball place, with the rain, you think, grass falls. Now, here, public comment, period, or to public comment. Basically, we're having a fun spot, it's, first, I say, D W, they do a thing to me, now, when it's time, you sound, it's time, it's up, and they just want to go over, bring, do some, for the offerings, for what we, that's all. Looks really nice, they're not right, it's assessments, and so I saw, they heard that fourteen Hudson Street got lower ten million dollars. It's on three assessments, not at that lower, when you're starting to be assessed. Right, well, I can, let me go ahead to the assessment office for a full answer, because I don't know that I can justice, it's almost for the past so, I understand this for twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty four years, and I can
I understand, but
So it's your back vision.
Yeah.
They are Especially when
Reassess whatever
One of those that was in the neighborhood can't be assessed, and said, there was two, there was fourteen Hudson, and then there was another one, and it was and it's part of the agreement, was again, reassessed for so many years.
Well, they both can't be for so many years, but it was looking backwards, so it's, so those are, are reassessments, reassessments. Thank you.
Yep.
So, keep it short, just a little bit, council's awareness to a really cool business that just opened up, it's a rock hill, a town called Hubblelands Falls, it's a new co-working space and art gallery created by Chuck Coopensire and Heather and Shane Johnson, really cool, and they're gonna have the open co-working spot tomorrow, eight to four, twenty dollars, and you have a conference table, and you get to work with if anybody works remotely. It's right next to Rock Hill, they just opened up, I'll make sure
Peter, is he on? Now, getting that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, so do a second, all favor.